Called order the Board of County Commissioners Work Session for October 29th, 2013. Welcome everybody, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the state symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures.
Okay, first item on the agenda is approval of the work session agenda.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that motion, is any discussion on that motion? Seeing now in all those in favor, if we promise to not?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, the purpose of a county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with the commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution Number 1301, we welcome the public to attend county work session, but there will be no public input permitted during this meeting. So the next item on the agenda is to review the October 31st, 2013, regular meeting agenda. Well, John, would you go through that for us, please?
Name is Chairman Commissioners. Start off the financial report, we had a prompt printed, Denise is gonna go check to see if he was able to make that print out for you. So I'll go on to new business. The first item in new business is we have the Village of Santa Clara is just coming in front of the commission, they're looking at annexing Fort Baird Road from US 180 to Fort Baird Medical Center. When they did the annexation, when we built the medical center, they stopped it off to the side of the road at the fence line, and now they wish to just annex across the road. So the mayor will be here to present to the commissioners their reasoning. It really has nothing to do with the commission, they proceed with the annexation process, if we have a problem, we can go in and protest the annexation, otherwise, if we just don't do anything, the annexation goes forward. That's all.
You got anything on that Earl at all, or? I was gonna ask him, he also, would I say he left?
No, I don't have a problem with it. Getting pretty much new road, we just got through chip sealings this year.
Chip sealed hill pass to do it, I guess.
Yeah.
Doesn't sound like that.
I don't think it has any effects on the county, I mean, it reduces the maintenance, it's a short road, so it reduces a small portion of maintenance for Mr. Moore. Otherwise, it won't affect any access to our properties, because we own the property all the way down the west side of that road, from Baton Park all the way back to the medical center is our property, and so it won't affect anything on our properties, that I see.
Okay. Moving on.
The next item is approved, disapproved, the grant of authority to the Grant County Manager to transfer Grant County employees' insurance broker and carrier from the state of New Mexico to Rideski Company under the described terms of October 10th meeting. Mr. Rideski came and presented to the commissioners. We've had meetings with the employees, he had some informational meetings yesterday down at the road department, a couple here in the commission chambers, had a lot of employees attend, just letting them know the process he went through, what they looked at, that, what the change in the benefits will be. I think they were very good meetings, he seemed well received, I spoke with some of the employees in the clerk's office, that they really enjoyed the meeting and felt that it was a good change in the benefits because of some of the things like you pointed out where your deductible, if you go see a doctor currently under our plan, you have to pay your full deductible, if not, and then you go into your copay piece, under the new, you would just pay your copay, it wouldn't affect your deductible at all, you wouldn't have to pay that, made it, so it only cost you $20.
When would it be effective?
What we're looking at trying to do is, we would have, we've gotten a sample contract, or we've gotten a contract from Mr. Rideski that Abby's been reviewing, and we've also gotten a contract from the Association of Counties that they have with their insurance broker, John Chino, A.J. Gallagher, that they've had for years. So we're putting together contracts, so if the commission approved this, we would enter into an agreement with Mr. Rideski right away, and then what we would have to do, we've been talking with the state, and Mr. Rideski's gone out and kinda searched to give us what our, what our reduction he thinks it would be. Talking with the state yesterday, they want us to go ahead and bid it for 10 days and have those insurance companies turn in a formal, I guess, a formal offering on what they would do, which basically is what Mr. Rideski's done, it would just be the formal process through the state, so it would take us that 10 days to go ahead and get that finalized, and then we could switch over January 1 is the goal, to have everybody switch January 1. It wouldn't drop any coverage for anybody, the coverages are the same as we currently would have, like I said, same types of things, we would cover vision, dental, medical, life insurance, we actually would provide, under the proposal Mr. Rideski gave us, we would provide long-term disability, now that we don't, it's voluntary, we would actually pay for that for our employees, so every employee would have long-term disability, and it would last until age 65 instead of just two years, so that would be a big benefit to them.
Do we have anything in place for the employees to address any concerns that they may have?
Concerns with, with the public meetings?
Just the informational meetings where they asked questions, he answered their questions, it was basically a question-answer meeting, he kinda gave them a broad overview and then they could ask any questions.
But is there any measurement from those meetings to make determination that the employees like or dislike this, or just that answering question?
We didn't, yeah, we didn't poll the employees, from the few employees I spoke to, they seemed to-
Just real quick, did the other electeds and the department heads, did you guys get any input back from employees, positive or negative?
What I told them to do is to have 30 people call up here and try and get ahold of you guys, just to go to one spokesperson, and they can voice their concerns, and then one person come to you guys.
They're gonna do that on Thursday?
I haven't heard of anything.
If anybody comes at all?
If anybody comes at all.
That's what I'm talking about, good. Earl, thank you.
And I would urge the others to say.
I mean, and what we're trying to do is, just like I said, we're not reducing any coverages for anybody, we're just trying to save money for the county so we can keep operating and not-
Well, it sounds like coverage is actually going up.
Coverage is getting better. Actually, coverage is better.
Money is less.
Money is less, it's gonna be almost a $10,000 savings per month to the county, so it's $120,000 a year savings to the county, and we pay 100% of the premium, so it's not gonna cost the employees anymore.
And with all the infrastructure needs we need, $120,000 for-
And their coverage, and their coverage is good, so that's-
No, and that's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to make sure it continues to provide good coverage for the employees, but also get the best for the dollar of the taxpayers, because that guy's paying for this insurance coverage.
Chairman?
Yes? I just have a question, I was not able to attend the meeting yesterday, and I haven't been able to speak to my staff, but the rumor is, is that there's only gonna be one insurance carrier available, we go to this plan, is that correct? Which is Presbyterian?
There's Presbyterian, but it's a PPO or an HMO, there's two options.
Okay.
But Presbyterian, and then cover, Mr. Rideski's checked, and all the doctors that are covered by Blue Cross are covered by Presbyterian in this area, is what he said. And the difference, I understand the difference between the PPO, the main difference between the PPO and HMO, is a PPO, you can go, there's a network that's across the United States, and so, but the HMO doesn't have that. But the HMO is, the way he explained it to me, the HMO is better for somebody that's like a young individual, that's single, that doesn't go to the doctor a lot, because if you go see the doctor and you pay $20 and they order x-rays and labs, that's all included in your $20 under the HMO, but you can't go outside the network, you always have to be in-network. Where a PPO, you can go outside the network, but you've gotta pay extra for those types of services, but you have the ability to go in any of the states if you're traveling or something like that, so it's better if you have a family, that you may be traveling with your family, the network is a lot larger.
And we can get you, the way he explained it-
Mr. Rideski's phone number, if you wanna call him and ask those questions himself, any of you guys, John has that.
Yeah.
I've worked with Robert at a previous company where he was the broker, he usually answers the cell phone and I'll talk to you as long as it takes to say you understand him. So if you just get that number from John, I'm not gonna push it.
Now, yes, Steve?
Our crew all attended, except for Ted, and their apprehension was, because they all have Blue Cross Blue Shield now, and they're very happy with it, is that they're kinda like, you know, not given the choice, and it's like, you know, that was their only, you know, comment of, well, how is that gonna be different, and, you know, we're used to this, and I said, well, that's, and then they, they just expressed, they said, well, I guess we really don't have a choice, I mean, it's gonna be, the change is gonna be done, and it's already a done deal, you know, and that's, you know-
Well, we haven't, we haven't changed yet, but I guess the reality is, is the savings actually greater than $120,000, because we got a call from the state that they're raising our insurance rates 15% June 3rd.
I would be shocked if-
We're already going up again.
Because having the copay and the deductible with Blue Cross like they currently do, that's a horrible plan, I'm totally shocked we signed that to begin with.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it's just our experience, I guess, that what they've had and what I've had with Presbyterian, because I have Presbyterian, and there's issues with the Presbyterian plan as well.
Oh, sure.
You know, if I'm gonna have blood work done, I have to go to the doctor first and make an appointment and pay my copay, and then he does the labs, because my labs are maintenance, not preventative. Once the bills are submitted to them, I still have to pay like 100 bucks for the lab work, my wife will go a week before or after me, and because hers is coded as preventative, they pay 100% of hers, of her medications, and then I get, go back to the doctors a week later after the labs have been done, and I have to pay another copay to meet with a doctor to, you know, discuss the results, and it's like, you know, it, so there's issues on both sides of the plans that they-
Same with Blue Cross, I pay all of that and I still pay about $1,000 out of my pocket every year.
But I think, in general, what, he did a good presentation, and I think everybody was, you know, fairly satisfied, and he did make himself available and his staff available and cards, and so, you know-
Sometimes it's just an issue of change.
Yeah.
Adults, we don't do change well.
And one thing going to a broker brings to us that we don't have right now is, if you have an issue like that, say they're coding your stuff wrong, Mr. Rideski's staff and his office will go to the insurance company and fight for you, which you don't have that right now, State Risk Management won't do any of that for us, Mr. Rideski will, he will go to the mat for you and fight the insurance company, because he doesn't belong to any one insurance company, he's a broker, and he works for us as the middleman between us and the insurance company, so he will fight for you, if you have a problem, or they deny the claim, or you have a coding issue, he will go to the table and fight with them, he's told me that he's gone to arbitration hearings on behalf of people to get stuff paid, and so he will do that, and that's one thing we've got, if we go this way, that we don't have now, as a benefit to our employees.
And that, and we're leaving our money in town.
Yeah.
You don't see State Risk Management ever supporting one of your local teams, or-
No.
Doing anything at the fair, or taking care of the Halloween carnival, and you see Rideski's name all over town, gonna take stuff.
Yep. Next item is, Mr. Lawyer wishes to come to the commission and thank you for everything you did to make this year's fair, what it is.
Make sure he mentions the road department people.
Yes.
Because we all know they were out there, so, yeah.
I got a pretty impressive email from a citizen who knew every name of the road department that was out there, and she was very appreciative of what was done by the road department.
She was the road department reporter.
Yeah.
That was Earl's wife?
Is that your old wife? Still, I'm gonna say, still a compliment, right, Earl?
Did the person leave Earl's name off, that's like a sure sign it was Dixie, if she left Earl out, that was Dixie that did it.
Okay. So, next item is approved, disapproved disposal of 1970 CAT 950 loader. Earl's been working with Caterpillar, looking at, we have this loader, it's pretty old, it's, to come where it can operate our zipper that we have, the asphalt zipper that we use, and so he's demoed some machines out with Caterpillar and found a replacement machine, but part of the process is, is we need to formally dispose of our machines, we're gonna use this as a trade-in on a new loader for his department. So what we'll do is ask for the disposal of this, we have to send a letter up to the state auditor and wait 30 days for us to be able to dispose, which will give us time to get the contracts in front of the commission and approve the purchase of the new loader. Looks like we might lease that vehicle through them, so that will come at a later date. The next item, H, is approved, disapproved EMS Fund Act Local System Improvement Project, this is for the Tyrone Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department, it's for their EMS Fund Act money, they're wanting to, they're requesting $4,500 for training and training equipment, which the total project is 5,500, $1,000 will be their contribution, and then the Fund Act funds will be 4,500. So the commission needs to approve that as the governing body over the volunteer fire departments, and that'll come out of theirs, it doesn't, and the $1,000 comes out of their funds, not out of any general fund, it comes out of that fire department's fund. Item H is the New Mexico Department of Transportation, the Transit and Rail Division, agreements, these are agreements to run and operate the Cory Camino's bus system, we get every year, they run on a different fiscal year than the rest of the county, they run on a federal fiscal year that starts October 1st through September 30th, so they sent us these agreements. You can see that they're administrative, it's an 80-20 match, and it's $275,412.80, which federal dollars are 223.3024, and the local match that's provided by in-kind is The operating under 5311 is a 50-50 match, and so the total budget is $722,131.20, which will be split at $361,065.60 to the federal government and the local group in the match. And then the 5316 operating is a 50-50, and it's $117,330, which 58,650 will go federal and 58,650 will be a local. And then the capital outlay, they've asked for $101,554.83, where is an 80-20 split, so it'd be $81,243.86 for the federal government and $20,310.97 to the local, so the whole grant is $1,216,398.83, which federally it's $721,289.70, and the local is $495,109.13.
And the $495,109.13 is split by?
It comes in all types of forms, the entities that are part of the Southwest RTD put-in funds, which is Hidalgo, Lardsburg, Luna, Deming-
Columbus.
Columbus doesn't put in anymore, Luna and Deming were putting in for Columbus, Silver City and Grant County, so Baird, Hurley and Santa Clara don't put in in our municipalities because they're smaller, and so it comes from the match of those individuals, it comes from fairs, it comes from advertising dollars, and any other contributions they have that they use as in-kind to make that match.
Vehicles, right.
Yes, and so that's how we make up that 495. So these are two Grant County, this is the agreement, and then everything else with it is what is required, we're required to fill out a disadvantaged business certification, the lobbying certifications, and then there's copies, several copies of the agreement.
Several, yeah.
Yeah, so, that's, they usually require us to send them up three copies. So, but that's, that's the agreement we get every year, that that operates the bus system, it's federal monies, but it's passed through the state, so we do it with State Department of Transportation, is why the agreement's with them instead of federal government.
And this is operating over, right, or do we pay for the actual infrastructure out of that, too?
That's what the capital is for, is for infrastructure costs.
Okay.
The administrative 80-20 piece, it pays for the office, and then the operating is where we pay for the fuel, the repairs, the driver's salaries come out of operating expenses, so mainly out of the administrative is really just the staff that works in the office.
Okay, so the capital, we get about $100,000 a year to buy?
We buy buses, we buy-
I thought you were buying buses.
It buys bus.
Did we get to roll that over?
We can ask them, in the past, they've let us do it sometimes, it all depends on the language it comes down. We bought bus shelters in the past with that money, benches, anything that's not regular operating expenses has to go into capital. Their computers, they just bought some new computers for the office. Next item is resolutions, the first is, I approve, disapprove resolution 13-72, supported the New Mexico Association of Counties Legislative Priorities for 2014 session. This is something we do each year, what this process is, is in June conference, the Association of Counties, all the affiliates get together, and they propose resolutions for changes to legislative languages or priorities that, for their affiliates, and then there's a meeting that comes around August, September timeframe, where the Association of Counties Board gets together and decides on what the priorities will be out of all those resolutions that were passed. So that has happened, it was in August of 2013, they've chosen the priorities, there's the assessor's office has a property tax equity, they also have a non-residential sales disclosure resolution, the clerks have a notice of liens, the commissioners have the Medicaid benefit suspension for the inmates, instead of cutting off, it would be suspending it until they got out, the detention administrators have a detention gross receipts tax, the treasurer's office has a delinquent property tax collection, and they also have delinquent property tax list. So those are presented by those affiliates, they go to that board, and then IMAC has asked that all the counties do a resolution to support those, because those will be the things that they'll be lobbying the heaviest for, is those changes that go with those resolutions, and you have in your packet a copy of each of the resolutions they've provided, and any backup that was given to them by those affiliates.
On Thursday, just so nobody's taken by surprise, if your affiliate has gotten a priority through as the assessors, if you'll be prepared to talk about those priorities, same with the treasurer, same with clerk, detention, with a recommendation of up or down, please, because we're not familiar with all your needs and stuff, I want you to have, have your say in that. I don't know if you want Mike to come and do that for detention, or if you wanna do that yourself?
It would probably have to be Mike, because Mike's been involved in the discussions, I wasn't involved in those.
I know he was at the meeting, so.
Yeah. So then, Mr. Chair, then our process would be, after they make your presentation, then we make recommendations as far as this county's concerned?
Yeah, there's a resolution up front-
Yeah.
-that supports them all, if we choose to not support one of them, we'll cross it off with an amendment and pass the resolution.
Okay, and then do we either cross them off, or do we then rate them as 1, 2, 3, 4?
We don't have to rate them.
Okay.
They're all equal, they're very, very important as to how the Association of Counties looks at it.
Okay, go ahead, Joe.
So those will be, those items, the next is a approved, disapproved resolution R1373, revisions to the Grant County nepotism policy. We have the res-, excuse me, the resolution, and behind it, you've got a copy that's got some yellow highlighted sections on what the changes are, Abby's worked on this, so I'll let her go ahead and-
I have one that's crossed out, and I don't have any highlights.
And there are more changes than what is highlighted, I just highlighted the key points. Up in the front of that, the longer document shows the changes, you'll see what the policy is currently. So as you're reading through it, you probably wanna read the current policy so you can get a feel for what the language is now, and then compare it to, on the second page, where it says proposed revised policy, and actually, it's more flexible than our previous policy, what we were running into is, we have so many family members in Grant County that we were having a difficult time scheduling family members in the detention center and sheriff's office, and/or hiring new candidates, so we narrowed down a list of what we are defining as family members. Down at the bottom of page two, you can see what, it used to be a longer list, and we've crossed out the ones that we removed, so we could get, you know, some family members now working together, however, we did keep the ones that are crossed off, I mean, we did keep the strict rule that we won't have any family members that are on this list directly supervising each other, we're still not gonna be doing that. So that's a little more workable for us and for, you know, applicants and our current employees. For instance, at the detention center, we have some brothers, we have cousins, we need all those employees, they're great employees, we're just having a really hard time scheduling them on different shifts.
You're key word is supervision?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, yeah, so they still can't supervise each other, but you could have two of the same rank, say, some brothers or sisters, they could be on the same shift.
As long as they're not supervisor in there, one of them.
Before, we were trying to do it more strict, but it just wasn't working that well.
New Mexico says that you can't have a brother that's a blade operator at Cliff, and a brother's a blade operator on the members, and then they're not, they don't even see each other.
We do do our best to try to keep them, you know, so that we don't have any bias or anything like that, but sometimes, they, you know, it just works that way.
Sounds like you're talking from a big brother.
I have a little brother, or the younger brother. Let's see, we added a little more purpose, the policy, and we also, we separated out, before we had, we just defined all of these relationships that are falling under our nepotism policy as close personal relationships, but we divided them out now, and we have family relationships and close personal relationships separated, because after dealing with them over the past few years, we feel that liability-wise, the close personal relationship is the one that is really more concerning, it creates more liability because you run into sexual harassment, you know, during the relationship, or once the relationship ends, that type of thing.
You gotta kind of close personal-
Yeah, sorry, it's, and we're defining it as romantic or a sexual relationship. We're not saying you can't have them, you just, you can't supervise each other, and actually on those, we do put them on different shifts, because we feel like that could create, like I said, sexual harassment issues, morale issues, I think we've all, there's always, you know, we all work together, relationships, you know, happen, so we're just trying to work the best we can with those, and keep them on different shifts, make sure they're not supervising each other, and that piece really hasn't changed.
Is there any thing in here that would give somebody a chance to, for redress, if administrator-
Yes, we say that if, if you're the same ranking, we'll do our best to put you on a different shift, and mainly, it's the issue that comes up in the safety departments because of the ranking issues, or because they're dealing with safety issues, and we're not only concerned about sexual harassment, but also safety issues, because we feel like, or what we've learned is that when you have that type of relationship, you're more prone to assist that person than be more objective with all of your coworkers, or, so, and also conflicts arise. But the idea is that we would, if it doesn't overly burden the department, that's a key thing, is we're not gonna create positions, we're not gonna require other employees to move, because we feel like it's a decision that you're making yourself when you have a relationship with a subordinate or a coworker, but we'll do our best to move into a different shift, or, you know, if, but we're gonna move the superior employee, not the subordinate. we're going to move the superior employee, um, not the subordinate employee. Um, if we can't, then we'll have to discharge the superior employee, um, but we'll do our best to work with them.
So I know that this was, most of this was in the sheriff's department and detention center for problems. You guys have gone over this policy and are comfortable with it?
Actually, the, the close personal relation piece of it is not changing. It's really the same as it has been since we started this policy, I think it was in two thousand and ten, where you can't be on a same shift and you can't supervise each other.
Why?
So that part's the same. The family relationship is the one that's becoming more flexible.
I think, um, the importance is, uh, the policy is, we don't have any problems with the policy. I think the important issue is that you communicate that to the employees and they're absolutely clear on the policy itself. And I think once they understand that and they have to abide by it, um, we haven't had any problems.
Sheriff, do you have anything?
Yeah. You good? John?
And this is, I mean, this is really going to actually help us. It, it kind of started from the sheriff's office because we had an individual that is related to one of our upper ranking sheriff's deputies, wanted to transfer into that department and because of the way our policy was so restrictive, that individual couldn't because they would have been in the direct line of supervision. There were several supervisors removed to get to that family member, but the way the policy read is if you're in that chain, you can't be there. And so it was a good employee, um, that the sheriff would have loved to have had in his department, but unfortunately we can't. So it benefited the detention center because he stayed and he's, he's a great employee for the county no matter where he's at, but this will actually make it to where if that happens again, um, as long as they're not directly supervised.
Now, do we have the employees sign off on their policy? Is the policy good?
Yes, we do.
It'll be distributed to all of us. And I did want to point out one thing and this is, hasn't changed, but I just wanted to, um, just draw some attention to it or emphasize it. When we get a new elected official, that's, that's an issue, you know, it's been an issue, a small issue for the sheriff, um, because we may have family members that are already in the department, um, that they're related to. Uh, so if you look at...
In the policy or the resolution?
In the, in the policy. Well, it's in both, but since we're already in the policy, um, I'm not sure if I can find it quickly. Uh, let's see, it's the one about, oh, here we go. Sorry. I think it's back on page two. Um, in the last line under, so where it says proposed revised policy, then you go down to the nepotism policy, nepotism generally, first paragraph, second paragraph. In the second paragraph, it describes that, uh, the nepotism policy applies to all present and future familial and close personal relationships. An employee or applicant shall not be hired, transferred, or promoted if doing so would cause a violation of this policy. The head of a county department, whether an employee or an elected official, may not avoid this policy by delegating supervisory duties. Accordingly, someone who has a familial or a close personal relationship with a department head shall not become employed in that department. And the key language that I wanted to point out is that sometimes we can't control this issue when an elected official comes in because they already have family in that department. Now, if it's a close personal relationship, that's a different story. You're going to be subject to the statutory, um, requirements as well and it really doesn't permit you to, you know, have direct supervision over your spouse or something like that. Um, but in that last line, it says accordingly, someone who has a familial or close personal relationship with a department head shall not become employed. So that's a key word that we put in. We didn't say cannot be employed, we said become.
So they can't be hired after?
We're not bringing more in, but...
If somebody's there, you're not going to, going to go after them.
The ones that are already in there. I just wanted to make that clear because a lot of times the union or just employees in general complain that, well, the elected official is related to so-and-so, you know, that's their nephew or cousin or something and there's not that much we can do about that, you know, that's just part of this process or part of the system, but, um, so we're trying to avoid it as far as new candidates or transfers to that department.
That makes total sense. Any questions?
We just, uh, we did tell it a little bit more. I highlighted, um, just, we were a little more specific on page three, um, as far as, uh, we wanted to make it clear that we're going to determine whether we can, um, change someone's shift or, or accommodate the relationship. We're going to determine that on a case by pace, case, excuse me, case by case basis, um, that the department head is going to make.
And we're only going to approve the resolution, right, Abby?
Correct.
Well, the resolution is the policy.
It has the final, it doesn't have the highlights or the old policy. Um, but we just wanted to make it clear, um, we're not going to create positions and we're going to have to look at these, especially in the departments, the safety departments, where we can't always accommodate, um, a change to a different shift.
Let's go ahead and go back to the expenditure report and then we'll take care of the indigent fund.
Okay, you have your expenditure report, it's the one million, one fifty-one, one sixty-six. It's really just a normal, a month of expenditures. We've, uh, we've got, um, we've purchased the vehicles, um, under our vehicle replacement program. We've been waiting for, um, the new explorers to come in. They've come in and we've bought those and as well as, uh, the fire management officer vehicle. So that's about, it's fifty-five thousand, um, about seventy-five thousand dollars, eighty thousand dollars worth of vehicles that have been purchased, um, which were purchased locally at Lawley. Um, so we've, we've made those acquisitions. We have a small piece in construction of thirty-three thousand, just doing some of our construction jobs out front, um, which we're down to, if you noticed, uh, just a walkway. And then we'll put the handrails up and, and open up the front. Earl's already looking at getting quotes on the paving, so we can try and pave those sections and get that all done. We just want to get that finished up. Um, and so...
Ask you a question a minute. You know, right there, as you step out from the door, that area, and it's scarred up, what have I done to that?
I spoke with Mr. Villa this morning about that. Because I came in this weekend and I was looking at how nice the front is going to look and then I looked down at my feet and I went, oh, great, I didn't think about this. So we're going to do something there. We're going to try and either chip that off and put some kind of sealer on there or do some patch, do something to that to rejuvenate that section right in front of the door. So we will fix that. But it wasn't chipping at the time we started the other and it's proceeded to chip since, so we'll, we'll fix that before it gets any further. We were talking about this morning, maybe looking at some type of epoxy, like the garage floor epoxy that's really durable, um, that if we just do a gray there, then it'll match.
Well, it's not slick.
No, and we can get the stuff that has, um, the grit into it. Um, so we're looking at those types of things. Uh, like I said, Randy and I were looking at it this morning, we talked about it, that we need to go out there and figure out some process for it.
Okay.
We've got the indigent claims are in your packet. Uh, this month, you've got the one thousand four hundred and twenty-one claims total. Of those, one thousand four hundred and four are out of the sole community provider piece, totaling five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seventy dollars and twenty-nine cents. And then the remaining seventeen claims are the out-of-county claims, which are indigent for fifty-six thousand, four sixty-seven, forty. Um, so, and as far as I know, I know Brian's here to give his report, but as far as I know, there hasn't been a lot of change on the future after January. We have opened the kind of registration center, I don't know what they're formally calling it, um, they're at the conference center. Anthony, or I mean, Randy and, and has worked really good with Justin's group to go over there and get HMS set up. They've got a couple of people that started working there as of yesterday. They're open Monday through Friday and then on Saturday. Um, they've got some advertising going on, we've got the computers set up and the printers, so they're, they saw one person yesterday. And my understanding, the last I heard is the website is up and you can go all the way up until you get to select who you want for insurance. And it'll save up to that point. So you get to put in all your information and all that. So that's what they're going to be doing and then the person can come back later and actually choose their insurance company. That piece is where it was stalling. Yeah, but that, that's my understanding, talking to Carmen Minus on Friday, that's kind of where it's stalling so far as you can get all the way up to choosing who you want for insurance and then it kind of stops you. But it saves all that information. So they're getting the people registered and getting all that, then all we got to do is go in and choose and they'll tell them how much they can owe. So, um, they worked really hard on that, getting that going. So that is going. We're going to add one item to the agenda. The sheriff received this agreement yesterday and asked me if we could go ahead and put it on. It's his annual agreement. Um, they kind of rolled them, he usually gets three of these and this year they rolled them all into one. It's his highway safety projects, it's operation, uh, Operation DWI for twenty-five thousand, six eighteen for October first through September thirtieth. Operation Buckle Down and Click It or Ticket for three thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars from October first through September thirtieth and a hundred days and nights of summer from June twentieth, two thousand and fourteen to September thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen for four thousand. And what this does is it offsets his overtime for his officers and then I believe the ODWI provides for a little bit of equipment for you to do that process and the rest are just overtime. The hundred days a night and the operation buckle down just reimburses for our overtime for officers to go out and work those grants and, and, uh, make, try and make the highways as safe as they can.
I'll just say pretty much the same, uh, sheriff.
Just didn't seem like very much, did it?
So we will have to add, it's one item, it'll be added under contract agreement to approve all three of those operations for the sheriff to go forward. And so we just went ahead and thought we would add them now. If they would have separated them up, I could have signed two of them for him, but together they go over the amount that commission is giving at all.
Okay. All right, we'll move into county reports and I'm going to let the hospital go first today. So come on up, Brian.
Thank you.
Push the button, I think it's probably not on.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hall. Uh, wanted to send my regards for Charles Kelly, our board chair could not be here this morning, but says good morning. Just have a couple of quick updates and then I'd be able to stand for questions. Uh, you spoke about the insurance exchanges and the assistance that we're providing to the community, working with HMS. I believe there's also going to be two, besides just being open to assist people, there's going to be two fairs that they are advertising for in the month of, of November, I think the ninth and the twenty-first. Uh, Hill Regional's really focused on providing the marketing, HMS has been leading this project. Depending on the numbers that show up, that'll determine if we need to train more people to assist with this process. So, uh, depending on where that goes, we may, uh, supply further support for that, but this is really important, obviously to our community. Um, want to talk about our finances real briefly, uh, our closeout for the month of September. We had a positive bottom line. Uh, that's two months in a row that we've had a positive bottom line. So we're several months ahead of schedule, uh, with, with our turnaround. So for the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, months of July, August, and September, uh, we do have a bottom line of a couple hundred thousand dollars. Um, not much, we still got a lot of work to do, things are still really tight, but this is going in the right direction. The projects that we've been talking about, the major projects as part of our turnaround, our big revenue cycle project, some of our efficiencies around our surgical services and our ER, we are in the early phases of the implementation. So as we've talked the last month or so, it's been all the planning and all the infrastructure and now we've launched those processes. Some of the graphs that we've, we've looked at in the past related to our revenue cycle, if you remember one, on that bar graph, one of those large areas was related to our, our struggles with getting coders, um, and our backlog of coding. Uh, we, we did, uh, secure three contract coders. We still haven't been able to hire full-time people, but, uh, you know, the plan B for that is always, uh, contract employees. And so we've, that process has started, so that number in that column, several million dollars in that column, will start to come down over this next month to two months. So the projects that we've talked about, the areas where we've identified we do have an opportunity to pull money back into our bottom line, those are going forward. Initially, it was presenting as an opportunity, this is where the money is at, this is where our opportunities are and now we're into implementation of pulling that into our system. Over probably the next sixty to ninety days, those monies will start to go through our complete billing cycle and hit our bottom line. So in the next sixty to ninety days, we'll be able to report on the full impact of those efforts, but that's going well. Another project I want to update you on, uh, this relates to monies we received from last legislative session. It was regarding securing, uh, two point three million dollars in appropriations for a new linear accelerator. It's, uh, for our cancer treatment center. It's the radiation treatment machine, big machine, big expensive machine. Um, so we have gone through the contracting processes for all of that and we've begun that project. It's going to be in two phases. We're now working on getting all the, the drawings and the architectural plans clarified and approved by the state. Once that is all approved, we will start to move forward and schedule the actual construction down in our cancer center and removing the old machine and installing the new machine. And that'll happen probably, you know, March, April, the installation portion will happen probably March and April. And we'll be giving the community, uh, a big heads up, a lot of communication around that because it is going to impact our ability to, uh, fully treat our cancer patients for a short period of time. We'll be giving our community, uh, plenty of heads up on that. Also, just wanted to mention, uh, thanks to the county and our match, we will be, we are expecting to receive the first half years reimbursement from sole community provider monies. We're expecting three point something million dollars to come back to us. We're hearing a couple of different numbers, three point one, three point three, uh, but we expect to receive that sometime next week or the following week. So thank you for that. And then we will be receiving, expect to receive one more payment towards the end of the calendar year. Uh, as Mr. Sari said, we're still uncertain what happens beyond January. There's still some talks about, uh, potential programs, replacement programs, but once again, our operating budget does not include, uh, any money beyond that, that point. That's the major updates I have and I stand for questions.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, and I know Brian's heard of it, is, um, I know we've talked, the state has been trying, human service department's talked about taking our one-eighth increment of the, for the sole community provider. Now they've dropped to a sixteenth. Um, I guess the kind of problem with it that we have is everything they say, it, it should work out. If they were to take an eighth from Grant County, that first eighth, which is about six hundred and seventy thousand, according to the calculations they've done, the hospital should receive a greater than three to one match on that six hundred and seventy thousand, but there's nothing set in stone in writing. This is how they're selling it and they won't put anything in hard numbers for us. It's all just in verbal and presentation, but it's going to be better and that's the problem that everybody's having with it is some of the larger counties like Bernalillo, um, they'll lose money. An eighth of a tax up there is a lot of money and they won't get back to the hospitals up there, uh, three to one match, they're probably not even going to get a one-to-one match on that eighth. Um, and so that's what's going to be the issue that people are going to be fighting. We'll have to be very diligent. I know, um, Brian's been keeping on top of it and having his staff, Judge Trujillo attended some meetings, um, and I know there's been presentations at the InMac Executive Committee and the Board. And so it's really going to be a fight for us to make sure that if that's truly going to happen, that we get the hard numbers before it happens, that, that it's laid out because they, they talk this great thing, but then in the next breath they'll tell us, but we can't guarantee. That'll happen because of the four managed care organizations now.
I guess first of all, I appreciate you sending Susie over, uh, to the InMac meeting. I don't know if you actually even knew she was there, that may be further.
Yes, of course.
Okay. Uh, but she sat right with me the whole entire time when Brent Earth, the Assistant Secretary of Health and Human Services was presenting, um, taking away our, our eighth or our sixteenth and, and made sure I was up to, to speed on, on the presentation as he was doing it. Uh, just to let you know, InMac overwhelmingly voted to not support the, the state taking our, uh, eighth or sixteenth.
Yes.
Um, I'll tell you just from my perspective what that is, is we have a governor and not trying to politicize this at all, but when she ran for governor, she made a promise that she would not increase taxes. Well, the fact is, is she needs this tax money, so she's asking for it from us.
Well, the fact is, is she needs this tax money, so she's asking for it from us, so we have to go back out and, and increase taxes to maintain our detention center. Uh, healthcare and, and other things, so there's a plethora of them, um, and we're not going to allow that. If she wants that tax money, she needs to come out and ask for it, uh, there's nothing wrong with saying you were wrong.
Yes.
Uh, and, and that's what she needs to do if she wants that tax money. But I, she's not going to take it from us, and it does require legislative approval, and we will lobby against that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
The other problem I have is that already I know in one committee that I'm a part of, the continuum of care, is that, uh, on the radar there, we're looking at possibly asking for a sixteenth or an eighth on that. As far as detox, a center and such, so, uh, uh, probably not a detox, but some, some kind of care. And so that impacts us, and it really bothers me that this is just a backdoor. And you know, as, when I, when I was a judge, I used to see this all the time, they would, the governor would say, I didn't raise your taxes.
Yes.
But like, as far as citations are concerned, you'd come in and all of a sudden, this was up as far as fines and stuff, and it, all of it was revenue bearing. And so it's, it's just a backdoor is all it is.
The calorie taxes.
Oh, yeah.
Clearly.
They don't wanna face the public as we have to.
Yeah, appreciate that, yeah, Beth Alred, our CFO, and Susie Trujillo will be really active.
And I, I hope when we're in the session that those people will be available for us when we're up there too.
No, most certainly, we are, we're making plans for, for issues that we need to provide feedback on, and that's one of them.
Okay. You go before me.
Thank you. You're very welcome.
Alright, thank you very much, Brian. Mike, you wanna go next?
I'm gonna get all of my statements in my report, October, November, two thousand thirteen. Item number one, the policies and procedures, you've heard me say this over and over, we've, uh, we've finished with the policies and procedures and they have been submitted to Abby, uh, so she can look them over. Policy and procedures, uh, that we needed to fix, there were three items in there that were suggested by Inmac and Manny Romero that we needed to, uh, build on. We did do that, I, um, submitted them to him, and he looked at them and, uh, he went ahead and, uh, approved, uh, the policies that we submitted. I do wanna let you know, uh, that we're not through with the policy and procedures, what our intent is to continue to build on these policies so they meet the accreditation standards, and that's gonna be our final goal. And we, we do have, uh, modern policy from Hobbs that has met those accreditation standards, and that's what we're gonna be building on to, uh, get the facility, uh, to that level with our policies and procedures. Uh, the detention facility update, um, uh, right now, we, uh, we don't have any vacancies, we're looking at, uh, hiring three temporary detention officers. Uh, hopefully they'll be brought on board within the next couple of weeks, and one of them, uh, one of the applicants contingent upon completing the background information, so if all that goes through, we should have the three, uh, new officers on by, within the next two weeks. Um, our facilities assessment, we finally, uh, got the second assessment in, we're compiling that information right now and we'll, uh, be implementing, um, those recommendations into facilities. So, uh, within the next, um, six months or so, you'll start seeing some, hopefully some changes over at the facility to meet, uh, what those assessment, the recommendations were. Um, as far as the training is concerned, this month I sent Sergeant Chris DiCero and Sergeant Mark DiCero, um, I sent them to a policy and procedures training in Riedoso. And the purpose of, of sending them was, uh, again, to, uh, help us with the accreditation standards. Um, when they came back, I told them that, uh, they would both be included with myself and Deputy Administrator Andy Zola, and we're gonna build on the accreditation, I want them to be a part of that. That's what the purpose of sending them to that, uh, training. Officer, Sergeant Gary and Officer Hardesty attended, uh, field training, and this is the FTO training course. Um, what my plans are is hopefully send two more officers to the field trainings, we'll have one field training officer on each shift. And the purpose of that is any of the, the newly hired individuals that come on, they will be assigned to that field training officer. Um, they will guide them through, um, their entire field training. Um, we have the curriculum set up, uh, for them to go through that, Sergeant Gary took care of that for us. So whenever we do, uh, they do finally complete their field training, they'll be good to go. Um, they'll have all the training they need, we can put them back there and, um, hopefully we'll have a stronger new employee than we've had in the past. We're gonna send our officers, uh, the newly hired officers to OC training, defensive tactics, and some basic detention officer training, uh, in Luna County. And also at our local facility, and that training is gonna be provided by Luna County free of charge. Um, I attended the Association Counties Administrative Conference in Riedoso, and this was, uh, very educational for me. Uh, we did go over a lot of legislative issues that Inmac is gonna be brought, uh, be bringing up to legislatures, especially those that, uh, specifically pertain to the detention facilities. The other thing that I've done is, um, at the conference, um, I presented, uh, what I got ahold of was the NIC, which is the National Institute of Corrections. I applied for training to be brought, uh, to our location here for, for jailed administrators. And, uh, this is specifically for jailed administrators and/or their assistants, or for their safety managers. Um, this is a very, um, intense course for jailed administrators, it does give the jailed administrators the accreditation they need as jailed administrators. Uh, talking to the NIC, um, they asked if, um, if we could be a host city, and, um, I went ahead and talked it over with Inmac and Manny, uh, Romero, and he agreed to go ahead and, and co-host this, this training. Uh, I submitted the application, this will be for two thousand and fifteen. Uh, there's gonna be, all we have to do is provide a location, much like a conference center, um, to accommodate at least a minimum of twenty-six participants. Um, when I took a survey, um, at the administrators' conference, uh, it was overwhelming, the entire, the entire room, and there was probably thirty, forty administrators there, and they all agreed that they wanted to come to that training. So I think it's gonna be good for the community, good for us, and also good for all the jailed administrators in the state to be able to attend that, uh, that training. I did submit the application, and again, um, Inmac is gonna help us co-host this, so, um, there shouldn't be, uh, other than just providing, uh, the location, uh, the NIC will, will, uh, pay for the rest of the training. So that'll be in two thousand and thirteen.
Well, I urge you to get to date as soon as you can, because the convention center's booked all the time.
Okay, I'll take care of that, sir. As far as intervention, uh, in the inmate support program, um, I've been asked, uh, by the committee to do a presentation before the prospectors. And the purpose of this, uh, is to bring awareness, uh, to the community again, and also hopefully, uh, seek support from the prospectors when they go up to the legislature for funding. Should we be able to progress with this, uh, program, uh, to the legislature if we get it to be, uh, someone carry it as a bill, and then, uh, hopefully we'll look for some legislative support. Um, recognition program, uh, we're accepting nominations for the employees of the month, and I'll go to detention statistics. Um, the average daily population for the month of, uh, that's gonna be for October, November, the average daily population, uh, population is seventy-seven, which is twenty-two more than last month. Uh, high population males is sixty-one, four less than last month, high population females is twenty, two more than last month. Uh, for the month of, uh, again, for, uh, October and, uh, November, there were seven, seventy-seven inmates incarcerated in the facility. Uh, monthly agency totals, SCPD, Silver City Police Department, sixty-four, New Mexico State Police, seven, Grant County Sheriff's Department, twenty-two, Santa Clara, six, uh, Baird, fourteen, and Hurley, D D one. Uh, the APOs, adult probation was zero. Detention facility conducted sixteen district court transports, uh, Division One match courts, fifteen, Division Two match courts, four. Uh, Silver City Municipal Court was four, Santa Clara, zero, and Baird Municipal Court was zero, Hurley Municipal Court was zero. Medical transports was zero, I think last month, uh, we went significantly from about fifty-four down to seven, and now we were down to zero as far as their medical transports are concerned, so that's very significant. Uh, total number of all transports for the month of October, uh, November is thirty-four as compared to fifty-seventh last month. Uh, jail utilization occupancy, uh, number of inmates sentenced were seventeen, when it was forty-six unsentenced, and, uh, custody hours were seven thousand eight hundred and sixteen. Offense levels were eighteen, were incarcerated with felonies, thirty-six with misdemeanors, and then such things as probation violations and warrants, we had forty-five, for a total of ninety-nine. And the total hours in custody for all those, uh, those custody levels was, um, eighteen thousand one hundred and thirty. And the statistics show a slight decrease as compared to last month. I have no other things, do you have any questions?
Just a comment if I may, uh, I wanna congratulate you, I, it came to me as a compliment to you and a person that helped you on that inmate support program. Your testimony you gave to the legislative committee, uh, finance committee.
Yes, sir.
And, um, they said that you and the other gentleman, I can't think of his name now.
Minister Relo?
Yes. You did an excellent job, and it was well taken.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, you got anything to do?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we're not quite back to business as usual, but we're getting closer. Uh, there's several roads that we've got in the county that we can't, cannot maintain during the monsoon season or during the winter season, just because of the type of material, and these roads are twenty, twenty-five miles long. So the blade operators are really spending some time up there getting those back in shape. Uh, I appreciate, uh, the residents' patience, because, uh, it'll be a little while before they get back into regular circuit. Uh, we just kept roads open during the rainy season, and now they're actually trying to get them all repaired. So it's gonna be a little slower process from, to get back into their cycle. Uh, I've got some patching to do, the razor's been out there on one eighty, uh, paving out there, and it's a different type of hot mix that what we can use for patching. I don't know if they're getting done yet, but as soon as they get done, uh, we've got some few bobbles that we've gotta take care of. Other than that, it's pretty much business as usual, I've got one more concrete fort today over there off of Rosedale Road, and we'll finish out the last LGRF project that we cut for this year, and so we can get reimbursed for it. I would just like to thank the staff and employees down there, they've, they've really done a tremendous amount of work this year. There's only six guys that actually not clean the blade operators, they'll just go out and take care of daily stuff, cover seven hundred miles, they've done heck of a job this year.
Any questions for? I, I do wanna personally thank you and your staff for the work that did it to Fairgrounds, they, it was exemplary, you did a great job, I really appreciate it. And I had a question for you, I got a call from a constituent to, uh, down in the Panhandle that wants to abandon a road. Uh, do you know what the process is for abandoning a road?
Well, usually we've, we've got a committee together, and I guess, as far as I know, it's still together, I'm not for sure on it, but as far as I know, it is. Uh, I know Abby was working on some paperwork to, uh, kinda change the way the things we, that the, the process had been before. The process before was, uh, they wrote a letter to me, and then I took it before the, the commission, and then it was before they wrote about it in the committee, and they checked to make sure that we weren't closing off any, uh, any state land, VLM, or Forest Service or anything. And then they brought their recommendation back to the, to the commissioners, and then it was up to the commissioners to get the road abandoned, was how the process worked before, but I know Abby's kinda working on it, but different kinda, you know, does she might wanna elaborate on?
You know, we have a written policy, not very quickly, um, but, and other than that, we don't have a written county policy, there are state statutes that, um, give us some guidance, um, or requirements. But, uh, a, a new issue that, uh, the attorney's affiliate has talked about in the, uh, over the past few years is that when we abandon a road, um, we, you know, we have the anti-donation issue under our state constitution. If we abandon a road, technically we should probably get appraisal and then assess that cost, um, it's a, something that.
You mean if we own the land?
Right.
Yeah.
That, I thought that's what you're talking about, asking us to abandon.
Somebody asks us to abandon a road, it's actually on private land.
If you own the property.
Right, that would be totally different, I agree with you there, but I think this one is his property.
Is it just, so it's just.
And it's an easement.
Yeah.
So we would abandon an easement and quit maintaining it.
That wouldn't be worth as much, I mean, none of them are gonna be super valuable unless they're, you know, large stretches of road, but that is a new issue that we have to deal with, yeah.
Okay, well, I know that that's.
Or that it's not a new issue, it's just one that we've been talking about.
Well, we are gonna get approached, because the, this particular rancher feels as though this is nothing but a drug corridor, and he says, and I, I will have Earl check it out, but he says it doesn't go to any place but a house on his ranch, and he would just as soon maintain it himself as to have to leave the gate open.
Oh, we can also, um, the, the county can approve a gate, however, if we've done it before, I think the call is.
Why would you wanna maintain a road just for one guy? Uh, if, if there's an issue like everything, if we run into, there's an issue with just abandoning it straight out, and so what we've done is approved to have a gate on it to stop, because they were having people trespass until we can get the process done. Or we might not be able to, and it might be a locked road from that point, when we come into an agreement with, uh, maintenance agreement on a county road.
I don't, I don't, I've got that pressure down there, and drove down through there and looked at exactly what you just wanted to do. Uh, there are several roads that intersect, so really, actually a gate on that thing wouldn't do too much good, and, and, uh, there is some state land down there. There's some deeded parts, there's some state land, then deeded, and then some statement, then deeded, but there is access all through there to that state land. He doesn't want to keep people out from hunting or being able to access that thing, what he wants to be able to do is off the hunting season, there's, there's a lot of strange cars and, that go up and down that road. And like he said, it's kind of a drug corridor that, down there, uh, he's seen license plates down there from Burnalio County and stuff, what he wants to be able to do is to, uh, stop them and ask them what their business is down there. And if it's not during hunting season, he wants to be able to tell them they need to leave. And like I said, there's several, that's what happened with those trees.
It doesn't sound, you know, be the best, um, uh, road for abandonment, actually, it's a, it's that, but if there's the state property behind there, that.
They said that there was other access to.
There's six roads that, that intersect off of that road, that they have different access to get to this particular road, just, it is what he uses for is just to go down through his property and down to, uh, his ranch down there. But there's several different roads that, that'll cut across and.
You could replicate them, if there is reasonable access to.
Like I said, there's ten different.
I just meant for the, it, it sounds like his is the main.
Yeah, but there's several roads that will come off of that interstate that you can still get to any of that state land. So he's just wanting to close down, uh, his, his road that goes to his, his ranch is what he's wanting to do, but there's still access.
We have a committee that should be going and looking at this stuff, we just need to have the policy finished so we can do whatever it takes. It's just other things have been more important than road abandon, it's 'cause they come very rarely. I understand. And so we've got business that comes day to day that makes precedence over business that comes here. Let's make sure our committee's together too, so when we do get the policy that we don't have, that lacking too.
Yeah, I know two of them, I believe, are Mr. Bayes and Mr. Agnew, and I don't know who the third is.
I think it's Mr. Crumlin.
Crumlin is the third.
Alright, thanks, Rob. Randy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, uh, just a few things, go over some of the departments, I mean, Senior Center, uh, seems to be going smooth, haven't heard anything, uh, uh, major there. I talked to Terry this morning, um, so everything's going good, cover Camino's waiting on the MOAs, uh, um, some of the agreements that you guys will be covering on Thursday. Uh, starting to get, uh, regular drivers now, uh, that are actually certified and able to drive the buses correctly, and the training is, we've amped up the training a little bit, making sure that we have somebody that's, uh, uh, actually qualified to do the training and, that's doing the training. Um, extending it a little bit longer, um, and trying to make sure that, uh, they meet the qualifications to do the driving. Uh, DWI business as usual, um, I'd like to get, uh, maybe Cindy in here, I was gonna discuss it with, uh, with John, uh, just as a report. Uh, I know she does it annually when she comes for approval for the grants, but I think it's important that, uh, at least the commission has some type of update numbers, percentages, kinda like what Mike does. Uh, just where are we at with the program and how are we benefiting from the program, not that anything is going wrong, I just think it's, uh, you know, the public could have a great understanding of what the DWI program. 'Cause honestly, I believe that, uh, you know, we've got, uh, organizations that come in and want to do, her to work with meth and to work, and so we have to really realize that the DWI program is DWI. And so I'd just like to, maybe she can come and give some numbers, you know, where are we at with the program, uh, on an annual basis or even, you know, once a year, you know, I mean, I don't think that hurts. As far as public works, uh, business as usual, the guys are working real hard, uh, we did some, uh, uh, patch work up at the courthouse, uh, I mean, excuse me, at the scene, at the Silver, uh, Street Complex. Uh, we played some, uh, We played some elastromatic, some type of texture to the courthouse. We doing some welding at the shooting range. Very busy right now. Everybody knows it's hunting season, so we've got pretty busy over there. What else? We got phase three of the apron project at the airport. It's a ninety-day project. It started October twenty-first, so I'm keeping an eye on that. Helped at the fair when the fair was on with the chlorine system requested by the environmental department. John knows about that. Of course, the facilities. The concession stand at Baton Park probably going to be shut down over the winter time because of the water issue and the freezing and all of that in the restroom. So we're probably going to be closing that down the next couple of weeks. But the facility, Baton Park, the major facility, will be open. Again, it's rented out consistently. Same with the conference center. You know, the usage is up and like you said, we can get with you on that and make sure we get the dates in even though it's a couple of years down the road. But that's what people do. They're starting to rent this thing because they know it's busy over a year in advance, especially with some of the big shows, the gun shows, the craft shows. They come in a year in advance and make sure that they have the facility. So it's been used a lot. Helped get the HMS going as far as getting them in area where they can, you know, do this. I think there's plenty of other areas that are going to be, I put a flyer in your box, Mr. Chairman, and I believe somebody will be here on Thursday possibly to also talk a little bit about it. So we'll just wait until then. I'll be attending an ARF training, which is for the airport fire training. Larry Anderson, our manager at the airport, will be retiring. And he wishes he'd be retired today, but he's giving us an opportunity to get some trained. Justin and I will be going up to Texas and getting some training up there. And so he's going to wait till we get back because as you know, when there's a passenger plane coming into our port, there's got to be fire service on the ground on takeoffs and on landing. So Larry retiring, we'll only have one other person or two. And so we'd like to get two more just so that we're able to cover those in case we have some problems there. From the volunteer fire departments, we're working on with Joe Chavez, who's the chairman of the Rural Fire Chiefs Association. We're putting together a webpage. And what we'd like to do with that webpage is link it to the county page. And I'll have all the information and all the links to, you know, whether, all the fire information, who are the chiefs in those areas of our volunteer fire departments, some links to some of the statistics that have to go with the volunteer fire departments. Also, we'll help the VFDs in getting information from codes from the National Fire Protection Agency. So just a whole vast of things. I'm hoping to get him here in front of the commission and give kind of a, you know, five-minute presentation on the webpage. It's going to be all orientated towards the public so that the public can go on this webpage and find out everything that they need to do to find out whether it's a fire wise community, whether it's where we at with the moistures, the fire content, links to the US Forest Service, links to the state forestry. So just a vast number. He's done such an outstanding job and I think the public. It hasn't been launched yet, but it's in the process of being launched here pretty quick. And so when we do that, then we will bring that in front of the commission just so they have an idea of where we're going with the volunteer fire departments and my position as a fire management officer. The other thing I put in your packet, in your boxes, commissioners, is the Wilderness and Silver Ranger District Planning Stages Project to restore the ecological function of the forest in the watershed and the upper members. And so with saying that, it has comments, they want some comments. So the reason I put that in there is in case you had any comments, you can go and make those comments yourself or you can go through me and I'll make those comments on behalf of the county commission on some of the projects. And it's a whole list of stuff that they'll be doing to restore the watershed. As you know, we did have the Silver Fire up there. Let me set up some information here real quick. Out of the one hundred and thirty-eight thousand acres that were burned in the Silver Fire, only fourteen, well, not only, but fourteen thousand acres were within that watershed. So the watershed that flows in the Memphis River and some of its tributaries are currently experiencing the degraded water quality due to the increase in the sediment and all that. So all that information is in there. We have until November twenty-second to, you know, put our comments in if we have some. So I encourage you to look at the document, read over it. And if you have any questions about it, we can do it through me or you can do it yourself. It gives you a link to Robbie Garth, who's with the US Forest Service. Other than that, I think everything's running as usual unless you have any other questions about any of those departments, feel free to ask.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. It's been fairly quiet for us. Lot of, not too much activity going on now that winter's coming and it's slowing down a little bit. Not that much, but what we're planning for this week, you know, we have the Halloween coming up, so I want to encourage the public to be observant. We're going to have a lot of kids, a lot of our kids out there trick or treating, be observant of the small individuals. This week we've been, last week and this week, we've been participating with the Coburn District as far as Red Ribbon Week. We've been very active. One of my officers has been there, I've been there, going through issues with the schools as far as Red Ribbon Week and actually it's been a very positive thing. Currently, I do have one deputy position that we're testing for today. There's several good qualified applicants that have applied. I'm hoping to have this position filled within the next couple of weeks. Also, I'm going to put in for, possibly ask for a temporary hire of somebody. We do have some individuals that are out currently that has really put us short-handed and I need, I need to get some help for some of the departments that are having problems with staffing. Also, there's been a lot of tragic events going on in the state in regards to law enforcement. We just want to send out prayers to fellow brothers and sisters that have happened in New Mexico and nationwide. Law enforcement has been targeted here within the last week. I just ask that we pray for them and keep us in the talks. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Be careful. Thank God that's all further north than us, but it may trickle this way, huh?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Treasure?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank our assessor, Ms. Guthrie, and her staff for their assistance and cooperation and really working diligently with the, our software company to get our tax rule issues fixed in a timely manner. And it really was a little struggle, but we all weathered it and got it done. And Thursday, October the thirty-first, we'll be mailing out approximately twenty-seven thousand tax bills. So just to let the people know out there that they're coming. And we've already had quite a few people come in and pay their thirteen taxes. We've had them online coming in. I mean, it just, so I think we're going to have a positive collection this time around. So unless you have any other questions, that's pretty much all.
Questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Madam Assessor?
Eric Morales and myself attended the New Mexico Edge Program in Rio Rancho this past week, and we both successfully passed our course and received our certificates. The first one was for property design and management, and the second one was mass versus fee appraisal plus subdivision valuation. After that, we attended the Fall Conference and it was also very informative for issues pertaining to the assessor's office. I didn't get a chance to thank Robbie Molina for the planning department. Our laminator that Mr. Villa used a lot for laminating the large maps during the fire season, that machine broke. And we don't have a maintenance agreement on it because it's so old. So Robbie was able to take it and figure out the problem and was able to fix it for us. So I wanted to thank Robbie for that. And that's all I have.
So maybe the fire guy should buy a new laminator.
I think so.
See if I can twist some corners. No. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk?
I don't have anything to do, Chairman.
All right. All right. Abby, I think you've got something today, don't you?
I think at our last meeting, we talked about Loma Verde and the difficulty we were having in getting the signature of that last resident who lives in California on the dedication. And I left him a message for him and John left a message and Commissioner Ramos also left a message and we still haven't heard anything from him. So I think our next step is condemnation. And I reviewed the ordinance and our regulations and it does contemplate that step in, if you can't get all the signatures on the dedication. And where the cost in that process, what we would first do is make an offer, give an appraisal, make an offer to him. If he doesn't respond or denies or refuses it, then we would go ahead and file the condemnation suit. Where the cost would be assessed for the cost of that small piece of property would be to the other landowners.
And himself?
Yes, because he will be one of the residents abutting landowners. So it's, I don't think it'll be a large cost.
Very way to keep your neighbors happy with you.
Well, hopefully he'll just respond and accept our offer. But anyway, so that's, that's what we're looking at is our next steps. Normally, I would just talk with John about it, but I wanted to say it at the meeting so that in case the residents watch cats or something or showed up, they would know that we are doing something.
We're looking forward to that. Well, I think you've got the full faith of the commission behind you on that, so.
Absolutely.
And is this your report? Miss Chairman? Is this the beginning of your report?
No.
Sorry, that's the, that's all I, I-
Okay. Is this going to take long?
It's going to take real long if you keep messing with me. I can make it long. And you know that. No, I just want to say, yeah, we called that individual and he's a different, the message was different. He speaks of himself in the third person a lot in his message. And if he's around, he'll answer the phone, otherwise leave him a message. And so it's a different, but we left messages. We all left messages and so heard nothing. And I gave him my cellphone and told him to call me anytime, doesn't matter, in case he worked or was gone and haven't heard a thing from him, so. Wanted to let the commissioners know, we've, they've opened up the registration for the association conference. So what we're going to do this year, because we've kind of changed up front, we've changed some things around in office, is people will need to get on and register. We've registered the commissioners and the people in my department that are going. I haven't registered department heads or elected officials. They'll need to get on and do that through the website. You should have gotten an email from the Association of Counties. You just go to their website, N M Counties dot org, you can register. Because I didn't know who was going to go or what. And so that's each department head or elected official decides their budget for the travel. Randy and I have discussed this morning and so he knows what he's going to do. And so people need to get registered if they're going. It's open. I don't know when late fees start, but right now there's a discount on it if you register now. So if you know what your plans are, go ahead and get it done. That's why I went ahead and did us. Commissioner Ramos, I want to state, he wasn't here today because he had out of town business that came suddenly yesterday, so he was unable to attend. He called me yesterday. So he should be here Thursday for the meeting. It just, this business came up right away. So the front is almost done. As you see, we just have to walkway left and the paving and we should be done. And we're looking at legislative appropriations to try and finish up, get the extra money for the sheriff's vault and as well as to finish the front.
We have got the agreement from the regional-
No. What's going on? I guess DFA is in a total disarray is what's going on. Everybody has left except for one person and that person doesn't know the history. They were newer. They sent our agreement originally to the Town of Silver City. We called them, told them to send it to us. They never did. Priscilla called for us and they said, no, that agreement needs to go through State Board of Finance. We'll send you a questionnaire because it was a bond sale under seventh tax bonds. They never have sent us that. Then all of a sudden, I got the agreements in the mail. And so we called and said, I've got the agreement. Should we sign them and send them back? And they said, no, you should get a questionnaire, tear those agreements up. And we still haven't got the questionnaire. And the bond sale happened in December. So Priscilla's been calling for us. I've been calling, trying to get the questionnaire so we can get in the bond sale because the fear is, is we're going to get to legislative session and they're going to say, you haven't spent any of this money. You obviously didn't need it. We're going to take it back when the reality is we can't spend any money without an agreement. Anthony was able to attend the infrastructure conference up in Albuquerque and was able to talk to the new director of local government division and tell him about the issues. Said he rode the elevator with him, so he had him captive for a while. So he spoke with him about the issues. The gentleman understands supposedly. I have not spoke with him. He's a new individual that replaced Ryan Gleason. So we're hoping it gets better, but they basically have lost all their staff. As I said, we are gearing up for legislative session. I think it's going to be a very difficult thirty-day session. There's going to be a lot happening at two o'clock in the morning, midnight hour. It's going to be late nights, a lot happening like it did last year towards the end when we thought we had bills killed. And mysteriously, without any votes or anything, to get out of committee, they hit the floor because they were consented out of committee onto the floor and got passed. So we're going to be very diligent. We're planning on having that same room for the thirty-day session. So assuming I'll spend most of my end of January and beginning of February in Santa Hopefully with the chairman there as well, like last year. But I understand that he has other business and this is my job, but it was always nice to have two of us because we kind of split and went separate ways and would divide and conquer the meetings going on because a lot of times there's several committees going on at the same time. So, but we're gearing up, so it's going to be a tough session. A lot's going to happen. It's, we're there to help support our legislators and hopefully get things taken care of. We have the senator running for governor now, so that's going to put a new twist into this session. Hopefully it's not held against him because he's not doing it out of grudge. He's doing it for the good of the citizens of the state of New Mexico. And so hopefully the administration doesn't look at it as a way to get at the senator because he wishes to do better for the citizens. So, but we're going to be there to support him and everything he needs as well as, like I said, the other two representatives. So it'll be a long thirty-day session. That's what's going on.
Where is Anthony?
Anthony had to leave. He was, had to attend a meeting at eleven o'clock out in the Gila Hot Springs. They're going to meet with the Army Corps of Engineers to see if they can get some funding to help out those individuals with some of the destruction that happened during the floods.
Low dock cameras?
So, yeah, so he is there doing that.
Okay. I wanted to let him know that I lent him out.
Oh, yes.
To ACI for some, for some-
I'm sure Robbie's the phone call. He'll come and ask me what I did to him.
Commissioner?
Is there my comments for Thursday?
Perfect.
All right. I did attend the ACI Policy Summit just last week and specifically went because Senator, who's his name? Senator?
Sebby.
No. Not Sebby.
No, not Sebby. My character. Cervantes.
Cervantes. Was particularly talking about water issues and in particular on the Rio Grande, but at the end he brought up the Gila again. And those guys just know so little about the Water Pact and the Gila, San Francisco Water Act and such that that's where I lent. I told him, I said, you know, really, if you're going to, if you're going to talk in front of groups, let our guy, he's been in meetings on this stuff for eight to nine years, and let him come down and spend a little time with you so you, so you don't misspeak. So other than that, it was a great policy summit. There's a lot of stuff come out of it and it's good. Also, like I said, we went to a, a meeting where the conservation and the wood cutters have come together and the nature conservancy and the Wood Products Association. And they're, they're both agreeing that, that the watershed has to be maintained instead of just left to grow. That canopies, the trees cannot touch each other, the snow never gets to the ground, it just evaporates. So that was something exciting. And I left, I left that with John and I think he's going to set him up to come and speak to us.
Also, I left you a card from the tire rendered fuel people. Hildago and Katron County both have asked to be invited when they come to speak to us. They probably shouldn't be at the same time, but if you can get in touch with both those people and set them up for meetings in the future where we can have them down here and really train our residents a little bit about those processes. So, anybody need seconds? Alright, we're adjourned.